With the bridge being demolished like it has been, there's a section toward the marine, and this just happened today, and I don't really have any of the details about it, but they've asked for time about making a memorial out of the piece that's left. It's just a small piece that has no obstruction for the waterways or what have you, but the way I understand it, the demolition is scheduled, one of them is scheduled for maybe tomorrow, and then the last one, which would be in that piece, is going to be scheduled for Friday. I don't know what this group, who's involved in this group, they just briefly explained to me what their intent was. We had talked about the city of Scottsboro, if they were willing to take some of the obligation on this, if the county might support them in that effort. Again, there's a lot of things to be answered, I just don't know, it happened so quickly, but I did tell them that I would bring this up and we'd go from there.
Mr. Campbell, I know you had made some attempts to contact some folks regarding a piece of that bridge, have you had any response to this point?
The, I did have luck in contacting the primary contractor that's responsible for the demolition. However, the removal, the demolition section of that contract is obligated to a sub by contract, so they have all possession of what's out there. And I've yet to be in contact, the prime that put me in direct contact with that person. So, as recent discussions as of last week, he was going to check again, I know he's made attempts to let them know we're interested in at least getting a section of that bridge as we spoke about for a possibility of a memorial. I've yet to hear from that sub or the prime when the information's on the sub, but I'll be happy to request that information again.
The concerns on that, obviously, if we're able to get a piece like that would be, where's it going to go, liability of maintaining that, things like that.
And I may be wrong, but I was under the impression of leaving it where it's at, because that piece is sitting there.
Is it on the water, or is it on the?
It's the first section that comes off the approach into the water. It's sitting on one column. The rest of them's gone. What size is it?
If it's a whole?
I don't know.
It's a whole section, it's about 120 feet, I think. But is it down in the causeway there, or is it still up on the bridge?
No, I think it's just right at the causeway.
Okay, because I've seen one down there.
But again, I don't know, I didn't look at it or anything else.
Do you know if this group has any funds available themselves?
I have no idea. Don't have any money. I know the latter of the two, at least saving a portion of it and relocating it, that may be something that interests me also, I don't know.
If it is, it must city limits Scottsboro, correct?
So, I'd like to know more about the whole situation, to know what's involved. Well, I would too. Time is of essence, of course, if it's scheduled to be demolished, then we want to try to partner with the city. Again, I hadn't talked to anybody at the city, I'm just assuming they have.
That group you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
I guess what we could do is...
Said they have 10,000 names on the petition, and that's who we represent.
The city had a meeting last night, we don't know if they brought this in. What we could do...
They said they didn't.
I don't know that there's anything, how would we move forward with this? We don't want to authorize, obviously, I would think we want to authorize a full payment responsibility, but perhaps authorization to negotiate with the city, some type of agreement.
I'm not even sure I know what the request is.
Well, I think the request would be to maintain that piece, is that right?
Or save it, the big thing is, according to the DOP director and the meetings that we attended, it would have to come from a governing entity to even save it. If it's a letter saying, hey, can you give us a little bit of time, that may not even be feasible, but that's what they've asked, and if we ask them to hold off on that part until we decide if we can relocate it or possibly make it a memorial where it stands. The big thing would be waterway obstruction and anything in the way. I haven't went out there and looked, I don't know how far that peers out, but that's what I understand the DOT was mainly concerned with.
Wednesday, you said they blasted today, we don't know when the last day is.
They're packing today, possibly blasting tomorrow, and then the last blast would be Friday. That's the way I understand it, but I don't know.
I heard Wednesday at nine.
All right. I think what we can do from this point then is try to find out more about that piece that's there, see if we can again try to contact the subcontractor and then talk to the city to see if they have any correspondence. That person with the group has contacted you, so they should contact me, correct?
That is correct, that's why I asked them to call you today.
So, I'll look for that and see what we can, what they've come up with. Anything else on that? All right, so that concludes the items on our business session. Because I think there may be some confusion about when we're going to start, I'm going to ask for a 10-minute recess, and we'll start back at 2:40, 2:52, so 10 minutes, and we'll get started with the work session. So, recess for 10 minutes. For return from our recess for the work session, we have eight items on the agenda as previously approved. So, we'll move on to the first item, the first item regarding the park project, playground, financing, and trail. So, in regard to this, several parks for this, and we'll talk about the trail first, that should be the first item we have, that has TBA at the top of the agreement. I'm not sure if you've had time to review that agreement yet or not, quarter. This agreement basically is for some funds, TBA working with us for funds regarding the bike trail portion of this, of the project. That portion was left out of Phase 1, and we had anticipated TBA funds either for that or for around the waterway, and they've approved it for the bike trail portion. So, we'd like to pursue this next week if everybody's in favor after Mr. Porter has an opportunity to review. And again, these are just dollars that would allow us to do a portion of that bike trail. Because it won't pay for the entire bike trail, I think we need to see if we can move forward with just a part of the project at this time, if you can see if that was, if the language would allow us to do that. So, any questions or comments about this?
What's the total in that?
Do you remember what the total was?
Was it 50,000 or 60,000?
And this is for 15,000?
Correct.
So, we're going to do 10 foot?
No, we might do a portion, again, information we have to does exactly.
I might give some of the strip. I might give some of the strap.
Right.
Some of the bike trail was existing roadway, it was just a matter of pipe mouthed out of the way.
Any other questions or comments? Any objection in place of this part on the agenda next week? Let us know if you see anything. Okay, the next part of this regarding the playground, it should be the next item we have in the packets. The first page identifies all of the items that we want to include in this process for the playground, the removal and disposing of certain items which the park will do, correct?
If you don't mind, I've got a letter here from, it's the Harvest Death Industries, at least this group is out of Ringo, Georgia, and they would like to have, if we, what would you say, if we want to get rid of this stuff, they would like to have a shot at it.
Just surplus it?
This just tells you a little bit about it, surplus, they would like to have a shot at it, and they would disfavor it then. That's the item on the back that we're going to get rid of.
And they're wanting it for their ministry, correct?
Yes, yes. He has a death in, a death in the state.
As mentioned, this is, this item is out of state. Would there, if we were to declare the surplus, obviously, that would, in order to establish something like this, what would be the requirement for it?
Well, it is a private entity, you can't make donations to private entities, however if it is, and I assume it's a nonprofit entity qualified under 501(c)(3). If it's not a 501(c)(3), I think you can't do it, period. If it is a 501(c)(3), and if it would promote public purpose, I don't know, I have to look at it, because it is a private, looks like a private cabinet.
He said it was non, it was nonprofit, before there were 501(c)(3).
Normally, there are nonprofit entities within states, according to state law, that are nonprofit, that are not necessarily 501(c)(3) recognized by the IRS. Like churches in Alabama are all nonprofits, generally, they don't have to be 501(c)(3) to be a nonprofit. So, I don't know, I have to look at this.
Okay. Question? This was a request that was made, that was presented. So, we will have to declare this surplus regardless, but the plan would be to remove those items, and then you see the refurbishing of the next several items, and then the worksheet you have goes into the play structure. We're trying to get those bids, sort of, this would be the bid specs, trying to get that cleaned up a little bit more and have a little bit more focus on that, and we have that next week.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll hope to have that next week also, so that we can begin the bid process for the playground structure. You also have in there a quote based on this, what we're looking at, quote, of course, it would have to be bid out, so that's an estimate from one company, I want this to pass. Any questions or comments on the playground portion of the project? Any opposition placing this on the agenda to bid out for bids next week? Okay, and the final item regarding the financing, Mr. Manning, do you have some information available for that?
We just contacted the, our local banks concerning the missing 15-year loan with 10-year balloon on that, as Y'all suggested we look at. We do have two of the bids backed still waiting until allowed.
And you've emailed out some information?
I did email out the one that's from the bank, which I should have already emailed.
As we get that information, we'll...
We'll get that.
And if you have any questions before next Monday, again, we'd like to proceed with the acceptance of the bid and financing option next week. So, if you have any questions before then, you can hit with love regarding the information that's sent out between now and then. Anything else of that that we need to be aware of?
Just waiting on their replies now.
Do you agree with that process, 15-year loan?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, like a good forward with that.
Just so you don't put yourself in a pickle, you know, that is...
The one that we got, yeah, it was roughly almost, you know, a balloon at the end of 10 years, and we determined that, you know, we'll proceed on with that. And so, I've got the other two backed yet.
I'm looking at that, and I mean, the pavement schedule, you know, I think it's, it can be made very easy, if you're ready, that's my general rate, just keep your, you always pay them. As well, we got pretty comparable.
It's a little, it looks a little higher than that one, but it's got their schedule back yet, it's just going to be a little higher than that one.
Any other questions or comments? If there's no objection, then we'll plan to have that on the agenda as well next week. Okay, next item regarding the revenue commission tax cell, tax cell location, and you have a resolution in your packets. It requests basically that we allow the revenue commissioner to have the tax cell and other location if implement weather occurs. Again, this is just to cover if the need were to occur, I think it's state law, it requires it be held to front of the doorstep of the courthouse, so this would allow them, if there is implement weather, to hold it somewhere in the courthouse. Any questions or comments on this? If there's objection, we'll place that on the agenda next week. Charter franchise agreement, Mr. Porter, I know you've reviewed this, is this something that happens every summer of the year, that you get planned for?
It is, and I think the term on this one is 10 years renewable for another 10, and it's similar to, we already have franchise, charter already has a franchise agreement, so this is just a renewal of that or renegotiation. We already have franchise agreements with Powell Board, with Farmers Telephone, with New Hope Telephone, the same thing, so this is just a franchise agreement to allow charter to use the right of, you know, pay us 3%.
Questions or comments?
Where exactly is it signed up?
Back further, let me point out, it's back further in the agreement, it's not on the front page, where you would think to find it, it's out there.
Page six. We have this to review, if we can move forward with this next week, if there's no objection, we can place this on the agenda, if there are any questions at that time, we can hold off or postpone. Any other questions or comments?
Where do we put these, like, franchise agreements, these revenues?
We have a...
Does it go its own line?
Very minimal dollar. Yeah, we do. Any other questions or comments? We'll place that on the agenda then, if next week, if there's no objection. Next item regarding polling place for Fackler, they requested that we move this from the Fackler Fire Department to the Fackler Community Center, there's some concerns with the fire department building. I mean, we'd like to see this done before the next election, I think we've got to do that 90 days, so at this point, we've still got time to do that. So, if we're prepared, we can move forward with this next week to make this change.
You say we have to make it by next week?
We have 90 days of waiting for it.
Do you think we should have a community meeting about his demand, or is this...
It's located right there next to the...
Oh, so it ain't... Next door, it's a better facility.
I just wondered, you know, I know something could get tore out for him if you move it too fast.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if there's no objection, that'll be on next week's agenda. Next item regarding library agreement, I think some of you may be aware of this, the Stevenson Library and also the Bridgeport Library have asked to be removed or to be exempt from an agreement that you have in your packets. The agreement is a resolution approved by, or agreement approved by, the Jackson County Commission, somewhat forming a library authority, it doesn't officially identify a laboratory as I understand it, but it does show the libraries involved and identifies the amount of funding that they receive on their per capita. I spoke with Ms. Taylor, who's with the state, and you see a letter from Ms. Taylor's on top. My understanding, if we are to move forward with Stevenson's request, which is to be exempt or pulled out of this authority, again, Stevenson and Bridgeport, we would need to pass a new resolution saying that there is no authority in place, and we'd also need to pass a resolution identifying the funding. Recommendation, of course, would be to leave the funding as it is now, the per capita to remain the same as it is right now, and then also to specify and clarify that there is no library association or authority within the county. I have not spoken with Woodville, who's the only group that's a part of this that I've not spoken with, so I would like to talk with them this week to see what their thoughts on it are, and then, of course, we'll need to get a resolution put together stating how we want to move forward. Are there questions or comments about this? It should not affect, again, if we pass the same per capita, it will not affect the funding for any of these organizations, they will continue to receive the same funding previously. Any questions? Okay, I worked, Mr. Porter, with the work to get a resolution, I've actually got a set one, I'll send you a resolution for the per capita, which is item four there, and then also to state that there is, that we've not established an authority.
Do you know what the form is, if the per capita stuff changes, am I worried it's going to change?
No, I think the concern is the process right now, because the way it's set up, several things have to go through the city of Scottsboro Library, the Scottsboro Library, and it limits the amount of grants that they can apply for, so by opening it up, they can all apply for grants, and then, of course, they can move a little easier, that's what I've understood from Stevenson and Bridgeport. Anything else, Mr. Liddle, any other issues that they have brought up? Those are the two key things I remember. Okay, so if there's no objection, then, any other questions? We'll place that on the meeting and should hope to have a resolution next week, if not, we'll proceed with the next work session. Okay, next item regarding speed limit on County Road 47, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in your packet, please find an aerial map with a yellow line, and what that yellow line is, is County Road 47, College Road, to the north of Big Reed's Groceries. This request came to us from the sheriff's office, and basically got on their radar due to a deputy issuing an unusual large amount of traffic violations in this area, so as you progress from the north to the south, there are several different traffic zones and speed zones, and to the north, in the area around the school, is posted a 25. That transitions approximately to Baptist Church to 35, and then further to the south to 45. Some of the pictures after the map show is on there. So, our recommendation in looking at this is two parts. Part A would be on the, on the first set of pictures you see, there's a school speed limit is on there at 25, and it is lacking the times at which that speed limit would apply. And then in the background of that same picture, you can see a posted 25 mile per hour. In the second set of pictures, you see where it transitions out of the 25 to 35, and then only further south to 45. The last page are the results of the engineering analysis done with traffic counters in these locations, and there are two speeds that we'd like to draw your attention to. Below the graph, there is a section called percentile speeds, and you'll see the 85th percentile speed is 41.4 miles per hour. Below that, you see an average minimum and maximum in bold print, and the average is 35.4. So, what, the suggestion is, after analyzing this and looking at the different speed zones, part A would be to add the times at which the school speed limit of 25 would apply, and part B would be change the posted 25 on the northern section of that roadway to the, very close to the average speed at which motors are traveling at 35 mile per hour. Basically eliminate that speed trap, if you want to call it that, of the 10 mile per hour, where it's posted 25 now, and the 85th percentile speed is basically 41, so you got folks traveling 40 miles an hour plus in what's at 25, so he could probably sit there all day and write tickets, and Mr. Harman, you may want to add any detail there or that's out.
Thank you about coverage.
So, we would, if there's no opposition, we would move to post a 35 and draft a resolution for that, if you guys are in agreeance. So, if there's any discussion or need any more information between now and next week, close up now.
Questions or comments?
Your proposal to be 35 mile, that's a high way sending one up to the church, and it's 45 from there.
Yes, sir, that area there, around the school on times, other than school zone, school, you know, times, it would be 35. It would transition to 45 further south out of town.
Questions or comments? Okay, if there's no objection, we have that resolution for next week, Mr. ...
Yes, sir.
If there's objection, we'll proceed with that next week. County Road 70, federal aid agreement?
Yes, sir, in your package, you should find an agreement labeled Aldot on the top, federal aid, rail highway crossing improvement. This is a railroad crossing on County Road 70, basically across from Wolf Jackson High School. The portion of 70, it runs from State Route 277 to US 72, and this is a federal aid act, basically, this is a maintenance agreement that you have before you, and it's a result of an on-site meeting that occurred today with Aldot personnel and this manning. And what this is, basically, it's an agreement on that part to maintain the passive devices that will be installed at this crossing. This crossing has mated on their list, federal aid list, and Aldot to receive 100% funding for gates, active and passive warning devices in the location, and from the completion of construction moving forward by signing this, we would agree to maintain all the passive warning devices, which will include markings and legends and signage relocation.
What would maintaining that entail, I mean, what, how often does that need to be replaced?
Yeah, once the, once the markings and legends are worn out, we would be responsible for replacing that, or once the signs lose retroreflativity, we would be responsible for replacing those signs.
If somebody damages it?
Dandelism.
Then we'd be responsible.
Accidents, anything, anything.
What do we have the capability of doing ourselves, what will we have to?
We have in-house updated markings and legends. Essentially, it's a high-performance traffic mark and paint, and we have the ability to apply beads, it's a manual, labor-intensive deal. Obviously, we don't have a machine or trucks to do the work with, but we can do handwork to freshen up things, so as far as thermoplastic, hot-apply thermoplastic, we don't have that capability, so it would be contract, it would be contract forces that would have to do that. If your mind is like mine, you're curious to why this revenue crossing would qualify for 100% funding, whereas I recently discussed 33, County Road 33, that's been a project, a project maker not, and in doing some research on that... Road 70 versus 33 is much higher, um, and there are a lot more trains that pass this location, 16, 16 compared to 31. Uh, 31 here, 16 at 33. There actually are two mainline active tracks here versus just one mainline as per, as, as compared to 33, and 33 has received some updating, so there are actually crossbooks, uh, whistles, bells, lots, whereas this one is just stops, and, um...
There will be no active portion of their track, it's going to be...
This will be full gates, uh, pavement markings and signage.
Any other questions or comments?
Could I make a comment on that?
Sure.
It's a cross on a school, for one thing.
Yes, sir.
And they've got one down the road to the, to the left, if you're, that, uh, has much less, uh, traffic, very little traffic on it, but yet this is, the one you're talking about, it's the only one that doesn't have a signal and a stop, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Anything else? Uh, if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda next week, and if you'll have a recommendation, Mr. Campbell, on how you think we need to proceed with that. Um, okay, next item, surplus for sanitation department, Mr. Rob?
Yes, sir, um, just to bring everybody up to speed, we ordered up three new trucks in September, and, uh, uh, they'll be in here, and within the next two weeks, those three trucks will be in here. At this point, I've got a 2013 automated truck that we're, we're going to keep for a spare, I'd like to go ahead and surplus it, and then we have a small 2002, uh, six-yard satellite truck that I'd also, we're not going to be needing anymore, and I'd like to go ahead and surplus it. The reason I'd like to surplus the 2013 is a few weeks ago, we had an engine go down in one of the trucks that we did, had already previously surplus, so with that being said, uh, later on, I'd like to, I will have to put a mold in this truck, so I'd like to take and surplus this extra truck that we had, that we was going to keep for a spare, and then make the repairs on this other one later and keep it as a spare.
Are we still using the 2313 truck?
Yes, yes, yeah, but now this one, this, uh, when I want to sell this truck, it'll be a few more weeks, maybe up three weeks to a month before it would be up for sale, when the other trucks are in and we're running those.
Questions or comments? Essentially, we're, we're going to keep the 11 truck now and surplus the 13.
Yes, sir, at this point, we have to, I think would be the best way for wrapping.
Okay. Any other thoughts? If there's no objection, then we'll place that on the agenda for next week. That concludes the items for our discussion, uh, move on to our reports. Mr. Fairwood, me, Mr. Porter.
I have everything.
Mr. Riddick.
No, sir.
Mr. Campbell.
Oh, yes, sir, I would like to announce that next Wednesday, we have a reconstruction conference for County Road 213, like, pretty huge, but the time is, uh, yet to be determined, so if you're interested, let me know, and I'll give the time to you, re, re-schedule us to proceed with the last one.
Mr. Rogers?
Mr. David?
No, sir.
Mr. Eglak?
No, sir.
And that concludes the items for this afternoon, so with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
But a motion.
Another second, the discussion, all in favor, say aye, and opposed, aye.